Good night. Tonight is a unique night. It's called Marathon Warrant. The town meeting, for those who don't know, has got 50 articles on it, more than I've ever seen. So I'm not sure if we're going to get through them all on this show, or if we're going to have to extend and go to a second show. But one way or another, we'll get through the 50 articles so that we discuss each one. And obviously, to the six people who watch the show, you'll know that we're not here to influence you either way, but to have a debate on each article. For those who weren't around, I used to always make the motion to fund the fireworks as an article. And Aldo Chayki and I would always debate, because Aldo logically had the right answer, which is that $18,000 could go towards schools or things. But somehow, it didn't feel like the right thing not to have fireworks in Milford. Well, sure enough, when Chris Moran used to come on the show, he would jump on it right away and talk about why we should, which forced me to talk about why we shouldn't. And a lot of people asking me, why would I make the motion? And then argue against it. But let's see how far we go. And let's start with introductions. Michael.
Thank you very much, Al. My name is Mike Walsh. For those of you who don't know me, I am a member of the Milford Select Board.
Chairman of the Select Board.
Thank you, Chairman.
Brandt.
Al, I'm Brandt Hornberger. I'm a vice chair on the FinCom.
Carly.
Carly Kernan, and I'm a member of the FinCom.
Future vice chair. Okay.
Baptism by fire.
I think you've cut it down to 49 articles, not 50.
It's 49 now.
But Article number one is always something that people say is the never-ending story. The Three Brooks in Milford. Godfrey is probably the one that we've done the most work on. Mike, you want to talk about the Brook?
I do. Al, to be honest with you, I actually visited a home on Mahew Slip, if I've got the street right, where the Highway Department actually had to go in and put a berm on the driveway, in the whole front of the house, I should say, because behind the old telephone building is a section of Godfrey Brook that has collapsed. In heavy rain, the Brook floods, and water runs down the street, and actually flooded, would flood this woman's backyard and her basement as well. So, you know, thank God that we have that grant coming. And we do, we need to, you know, I think if you go on to Congress Terrace and look at the repair that was done at Godfrey Brook on Congress Terrace, that's exactly what we have to do at the other two locations.
Well, I remember, this deals with the Brook section. And we had talked about it being $25 to $30 million to do the whole Brook. And the problem is, the minute you allocate money to do it, you don't get any funding from the state, because they say, you obviously have the money, you've already done it. So we're going to give the money to places that don't. There's three Brooks in Milford. Godfrey Brook, Hospital Brook. Anybody know the third?
I don't.
O'Brien, or?
You got me.
But you know, the Godfrey Brook, people forget that our Brooks run through town, so like under Main Street. It can be substantial problems if that Brook collapses.
Well, the third, then, if it runs under Main, the third would be Charles. Because the Charles comes by the bike path under the road by Sacred Heart, right?
Yeah, but I'm drawing a blank. I'm getting old.
Done by the Highway Department.
Yeah, but there's Hospital Brook, by Milford Hospital, the Milford Medical Center. There's Godfrey Brook. And I can't remember the third one, which is silly, but...
And we just did Hospital Brook over, too.
Well, we've done pieces.
Yeah.
You know, again, I remember a few years ago, we went down a West Street, and the person's house was a foot and a half away from where the water had eroded the land. So if we hadn't done something there, they would have lost their home. And what they've been doing, Scotty's been, Scott Christofoli, Highway Surveyor, has been taking and doing sections. So you get a U shape that fits in and does 20 feet. And then when the next section collapses, because remember, a lot of this stuff was done 100-plus years ago. It was just rocks. And over the years, the dirt has just eaten away at the foundation, and all the rocks collapse in. So little by little, we've been going at this. Now, this is a million-dollar project. It's amazing how little you get done for a million bucks now. Our match is $300,000. And luckily, we have money in a previous article that we can use. So although this is $300,000 asked to spend, there's no new money coming out. And the never-ending story will continue, because I'm sure in a year or two, there'll be another section that collapses. And hopefully, Scott will keep getting us grants, and we just keep doing section by section.
Yeah.
Article two. Birch Street Fire Station Roof.
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy, Al. You know, this is a project that has been on our capital plan for a while. And for, on the planning, we looked at this as a $300,000 project to redo the whole roof. The good news is, when they brought in some contractors to take a look at the actual work, to see what would take to remediate the leak problem, they realized, you know, we can do the work just by focusing on the dormer area. So we're at $35,000. You know, when, this contractor, by the way, is somebody that's on the state bid list, and I think it's the same contractor that's doing some repairs for us at Memorial. So somebody familiar to the town. And $35,000 versus the 300 we've been planning for. So, you know, it's good to take care of this, and it's good that it's less than what we thought it was going to be originally to be planned for.
And realistically, this to me paints a picture of the Milford department heads. You know, that we had budgeted 300, we had allocated 300, because we thought we'd have to replace the whole roof. And all of a sudden, chief, Fire Chief comes back, Mark comes back and says, "Don't have to, we only have to do one little section." In a few years, we may have to revisit it.
Yeah. You know, Al, I was saying to you earlier, I had this conversation with my son, you know, this morning. He was driving to work, and we'll talk about it later on, but the amount of free cash that's come up this year. And he said, "Dad, how do you do that?" I said, "Good management, good management." And it goes, you know, Al, to your point, the department heads. You know, Mark very easily could have said, "You know what? Just do it all." And Town Meeting probably would have approved it. But instead, he said, "You know what? No, it's not necessary." And to Brandt's point, the contractor said, "It really doesn't need to be done. You only need to do this." And how many times, you know, you and I have been around a while, Al, have we sat with department heads and said, "Do you really need this now, or can you wait a year?" And they always say, "I can wait a year," or something like this, where they say, "No, I don't need the 300,000. I just need 35,000 for this." You know, and that's a great point of what goes on in this community.
Number three, compensating balances. Anybody want to touch that one?
This is a straightforward one, isn't it, though, Al? This is one that I think that we just do every year, and we typically just have to replenish the retirement.
Yeah, this is when we're buying out people who are retiring. So, you know, we owe somebody 20 grand, 30 grand. Instead of coming back every single year, we put a pool of money of 250. This year, we're saying, "Put 300." It doesn't affect how much gets spent, that's by contract. But now, once a year, we come back and say, "Okay, what we owe by contract is typically 100 and a quarter with all the retirees." So we're down to $1,000, or maybe 3,000, somewhere in that single digit. So it's pretty straight. I mean, it's a contract, we owe the money. We're just going to replenish this, hopefully with 300,000. And then we don't have to bother for a couple of years.
Right.
Judicious process.
The Employee Time Track System. Mike, here's your favorite.
This is mine. You know, all my years of serving the community, I always have said, "Who keeps track of the employees?" And they said, "Oh, it's the honor system." I said, "The honor system?" And so one day, I went to Town Hall, and I said, "Could I see how we do payroll?" And all these sheets come in from all the different departments, handwritten. And I'm like, "Well, how do you know that somebody really..." And I don't mean anything against any of the employees, because they're great, but the honor system, I said, "When I saw this Article, Article Four, I was thrilled, because you have to punch in, you have to punch out." And what a lot of people lose sight of is that the town of Milford is self-insured. If you're, if you leave work for a simple thing, to go to Dunkin' Donuts and get a coffee, and get involved in an automobile accident, and we don't have proof that you've punched out to go get that coffee, the town's liable to pay you. So now, now, you punch in in the morning, and you say to your supervisor, "I'm just going to run to Dunk, no problem. Punch out. You're on your own now." And that's why something like this is so important, is not only accountability, liability.
Well, a lot of it, too, is, "Well, Mike, you like Carly or you like Brandt better than me, because you let him take an hour off, and he doesn't account for it."
Yeah.
So you talk about exposure, you sit there and say, "I did? You know, you didn't mean to give preferential treatment." But some, today's, the way people want to sue everybody, you just never know.
I think it also moves us forward, right? It's kind of a first step in getting into more forward thinking in terms of how do we move the financial system in town to like that next step? If we have time tracking, then maybe we can move to payroll and such, so that it's a step one as we move forward, as opposed to just having it manually done.
Yeah, and Zach used that leverage, where he said, "Remember Munis? $300,000?" He goes, "This is step one. I could do this for a year or two."
And then you phase in.
And then we'll phase in the rest.
Yeah.
So, and I think that one is $21,000?
$21,000.
$21,000? Stacy's School Interior Painting.
Yeah, so we spent some time with the school administration and the school committee recently. And a little bit of a change in our, in relation to the capital plan we had in place. You know, when we spent some time together, what we found was, you know, some good news in that the school was first really aggressive in trying to get a lot of grant money during COVID. And, you know, a lot of town departments were, and that was, you know, a big success for the town as we navigated through the pandemic. One of the things that the school is able to do is replace a bunch of carpeting and sort of porous floors that, you know, from a health environment, you can see that it would make sense to get rid of some of that, replace it with a hard vinyl kind of surface. So what moves forward on their capital plan is this interior painting. So, you know, the floors are now done, by all accounts, looks beautiful. Now, you know, the same money that we were going to put towards the floor project, we put towards the painting, and we're a couple of years ahead on the whole capital plan. And Stacy, you know, gets a nice facelift on that. And it all starts with, you know, people being diligent and aggressive and applying for grant money and trying to improve Milford and our facilities by using grant money. And I think it made a lot of sense, from a health perspective, to get rid of these carpets.
Yeah, I think realistically, we had in the budget to do the painting first, and then the carpet.
We just flipped them.
And they just flipped it, and they said, "Okay, we used our own maintenance money to do the floors." And this is just, again, working together. Because we could have said, "Yeah, great, you used your money, now you don't need our money." But that's not fair.
Yeah, Al, I can remember having a conversation with John Pine, a former selectman, saying that, you know, we would build these buildings, using Milford High School as an example, and we would do nothing to them for 30 years, other than cut the grass. And then all of a sudden, these major projects would come up, and everybody'd be like up in arms about it, and even say, "Well, we didn't do anything for 30 years." And now with Rob Quinn at the school department, Carlos Benjamin at, you know, the town buildings, we're constantly, just like our homes. You're constantly doing something at your house every year, whether it's painting, or putting a new section of lawn in. And, you know, to Brandt's point, that's exactly what we're doing, is, you know, let's spend a little bit of money, let's update it, let's keep it in good shape. So 30 years from now, we don't have this big bill. And we were talking about it the other night. We got the high school coming, you know?
There's a school coming.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's amazing to people how big a school can be. Because when you start talking about $200,000 to paint it. You know, the Town Hall, where we had to budget it over a couple of years, because it was like $300,000 to paint it.
Yeah.
People forget how big these buildings are, and how much work has to go in.
And how much equipment, you know, they have to bring in to do it.
It's expansive.
You know?
So this just seems like a good way of cooperating, that they were supposed to pay for the painting, and we were supposed to pay for the floors. It made more sense to let them move quick and do the floors. Now, the spirit is still the same. So we're holding up, and now coming for $200,000 to paint. Doors.
Garage doors.
Garage doors.
Garage doors, because I think that was our conversation at FinCom, right? So this is for the police station. It's kind of giving a facelift and update to the larger garage doors that the trucks and large vehicles go in and out of. So I think at first, when we discussed it, we said, "Wow, $100,000 for doors." We got a little confused, but it's actually the garage doors that are, that are starting to become inoperable, that we need to get these vehicles in and out of.
Yeah, last year, we faced the small doors in the back
The interior.
that weren't closing. So the chief and Sank said, "Well, we go downstairs out in the back, and there's people. They just let themselves in." I don't understand why you'd, you know, if your back door was open, why'd walk into your house, "Hey, Mike!" But, you know, there's a security issue when people can just walk in to the police station unannounced. But now, these are the large doors that they bring, the big trucks, and all the stuff in that they use.
And then, you know, Al, there's another example of, it's a town-owned building. We got to maintain it, you know? And if we need to put garage doors in there, we need to put garage doors in there. You know, that addition is got to be 20 years.
Oh, yeah.
Got to be, you know?
Next one, mending the personnel bylaw. This is not a financial article, obviously.
It's actually just a change of verbiage.
Change of wording, yeah.
Isn't it?
Yeah, that's all it is. Yeah.
From grade to step?
They're going from the word "select," no, I'm sorry, they're going from "step" to "grade."
Yeah, this was one where we don't use "step," we use "grade."
Right.
And all of the bylaws were written the opposite way.
Right.
So nothing's changing. It's not like you're taking and bringing up the steps of the grades. You're just changing the word.
Just changing the verbiage, you know? It's very confusing, because as you know, in the school department, we use steps and lanes.
Now, we have Fino Field. Article number eight.
This one definitely is a financial matter. So right now, the estimate is $4.6 million when you look at the pool. You know, stepping back, the pool has been signaled for many years to be at end of life. And, you know, so it's something that we've been hearing about from the Parks Department for some time, and it got a little bit delayed with the pandemic. You know, one of the complicating things about this project is that it, you know, abuts, you know, a lake in a wetland environment. We've got a big retaining wall across that, which is really kind of unique. You know, it's a special place that we have with all the trees in the park. It's in the middle of town, right up against the lake. That's fairly uncommon, I think, to see, you know, a pool like that. So that's pretty special. The design that we have is from, you know, in the town, I guess I should say, you know, in the Parks Department, worked with some consultants called BHNA. And they're public pool specialists. And if anybody was interested in diving into this one, because it's the biggest ticket really on this warrant. I know it's public information, it was shared at some of the forums, but this BHNA, these public pool specialists, they've got a really healthy list of big projects that they've done around the state. And they're, they've designed for us within the footprint, so not disturbing any parks, or any of the fields, I'm sorry, in the park, within the footprint of the pool now. A lap pool, and then a splash park, and then it'll be a bathhouse into some bathrooms that are kind of accessible through the gate. So if the pool's closed, you can still use it from one side of the gate, or when the pool's open, you can use it the other way. But a big project, and a complicated project, because of, you know, the space that we have, which is really special downtown. We're right up against a wetland, you know, which is, you know, difficult to work with. And, but, you know, we have design work that's been done by some, you know, a firm that has done, you know, a lot of large-scale projects around the state. And I think it's a really nice-looking design, but I know it's going to be a big conversation.
Well, $4.6 million.
Well, BHNA, just so the general public knows, too, they were one of the finalists on the U Center, the architectural firm in the U Center. And so the gentleman that did the presentation that night, I know you were there, Al, at the pool, was the gentleman that did the presentations for the U Center. But I think what was very touching was when Mrs. Bontempo spoke, and she said, when she and the doctor came back from Italy, after he had graduated from medical school, and I think they had either three or the four boys, you know, she needed a place to go every single day to, you know, get them out of the house and let them burn some energy. And she would go to, she'd go to the pool at Fino Field, and it gave her the opportunity to socialize with other families, and for the boys to socialize with other children. And we can't lose sight of that in this community, you know? And this is a project that just needs to be done, and continue on this history in this community.
You can't justify this. $4.6 million, it's a crazy amount of money. But it's Milford.
Yeah.
You know, this, we've got the Casey Pool, and for a decade and a half, there's been the argument every time Pete Filos came up and needed money to Band-Aid the Fino Pool, that we should close it and just pick up this Casey Pool. Logically, that made a lot more sense. But emotionally, there's no trees at the Casey Pool. There's no easy way to wade in with your grandkids at the Casey Pool. So, you know, Fino Pool has been Milford. Now, the new pool is going to be a little smaller, but it's also going to have swim lanes. So you'll have it in a way that more people can use it for different things.
I think it's a thoughtful design with the splash pad, with the swim lanes, and then the improvements from the ADA perspective as well, to make that area ADA compliant. And then, to Brandt's point, being able to have the bathhouses and some of the bathrooms being adjacent, such that you could use it if you're at the field, which you can't do today, and also be able to use it for the pool as well. So I think it's beautifying the area and giving more utility to that space as well.
And it's Milford. I mean, you, you know, Mike, you, it sounds terribly sexist, and I apologize. You're a man when you could swim across that deep end. Nobody ever told us that the middle of the pool wasn't bottomless. It was, what, six feet?
Yeah.
You know, after a while, if we'd stood up, we probably could have walked across dang pool. But it was something to swim to that pillar, you know? It just, it was a rite of passage.
Well, I was going to say, Al, you talk about this all the time, about traditions of Milford. That's a tradition of Milford. You know, going to the pools, whether it's Fino or Casey, wherever you hung out in the summertime, that was a tradition.
Yeah, and Casey was right in the heights. It was 200 yards from my house. We still went down to Milford Pool.
Yeah.
Because you got under the trees. I mean, when I, when I had people living with us, and Carrie's son, we wanted to take him to the pool, took our blanket, took our picnic basket, went down to Fino, and just hung out for the afternoon.
Yeah.
You could have done it at Casey, but you'd be in the middle of the hot, blaring sun.
Right, there's trees, there's shade, it's very family-friendly.
And, I mean, right now, I think one of the issues that'll come up is, we're talking about $4 million, or $3.8 million. We checked on the cost, because it went up $800,000.
Right.
None of the money came from the design. It's all materials.
Which is a byproduct of the environment and economy right now.
Because of COVID.
I mean, when you start thinking about what people have been paying for 2x4s at Lowe's and all, it all translates to extra cost when you're doing buildings.
Yeah.
Or cubic yard of cement, everything went up.
Yeah, Mike made a point a bit ago about the free cash, you know? And, you know, if you're looking at this warrant and saying, "How the heck can we afford this thing? We're in the middle of buying the water company, people talk, there's a school's coming." You know, that's, that would be an excellent question, by the way, because we wouldn't, I would suggest, wouldn't want to borrow this money right now. This would be a difficult time for us to borrow money, right when we're trying to, you know, close the water company, and we probably have a school coming. And this free cash situation that we have, which is really as a result of good planning, it puts us in a position where, you know, everything that we just said about this pool is true. And then, you know, Al, you're right, you know, maybe, maybe it's not logically the thing to do, but emotionally, it's just a really special thing to do. And it coincides with the time when we actually have the cash through good planning, with all the chips fell our way in the pandemic, and we can afford this.
Yeah, when you think about it, Milford's been blessed with its department heads. Because as you think through, I don't know, it's this 14th year in a row of a surplus, you know, and we don't use any profanity, those words like "two and a half override" and "debt exclusion", most profane words I can imagine. Here we are with $10.9 million. That's a lot of money.
Sure is.
It's a lot of money in a time right now, which has been a very difficult time for a lot of folks in the last year or two years with everything going on.
Well, that's what I said to Zach, you know, last night. I said, "It's amazing to me is that we, you know, we are coming through. Hopefully, we're getting to the end of it, let's hope, of COVID. And we come in with a record, a record amount of free cash." It's just like, I'm not complaining, but like, how do we do that?
We got our geriatric authority, countryside, who needs help?
Yeah.
And the Select Board's allocated $1 million in case they need it. This is not a loan. I mean, they already owe the town $12 million. This is a gift to get them over the COVID situation. Well, the fact that we could have the ARPA money, the federal government money, available to do projects like Help Countryside. So we didn't have to touch any of this $10.9 for emergency measures.
Well, I think what's important, too, Al, and you and I have spoken about this before, you know, we, it came up last year. You know, your mom was there, my wife was there, unfortunately. And there's a lot of people in the community of Milford that have loved ones that are there. And if we don't step up to the plate and help them out, you know, they, you know, again, I keep bringing up COVID. They lost their whole physical therapy program. So the people that were there were just long-term residents. But the money that they make from physical therapy, they lost all that. And if we don't take responsibility and say, "Hey, we're here to help," you know, because that's a Milford facility.
I think when you look at it, the people who say, "Well, it's only half full of Milford people. It's only this," it's, we have to deal with the fact that most nursing homes aren't making it. And we, as a town, have to decide, what is it worth to have? Because like you say, my mom was there.
Yeah.
A mile from my house. I could run over there, be with her, and then still make it home for a late dinner. Friends of mine have their loved ones, mother, father, grandparents, 45, 50 minutes away. I mean, it's not easy to, at the end of the day, fit in two hours. You know, you talk about field hockey. Well, where do you fit in two hours if you have to take your kids to field hockey?
Right.
So someday, let's hope it never comes to it, but someday, Milford may have to decide, what is it worth to number one, have a facility a mile away? And number two, they go above and beyond. It's not even the distance that you'd have to go. You're not going to get the same level of care.
Right.
So. Number nine, accepting Gordon Way.
I find that interesting, Al, because in your notes here, and you're 100% right, it's typically referred to the Select Board as they have a set procedure to accept a road or a street. I'm confused why that's even an article on Town Meeting. Why wouldn't that come to us?
I was told a while ago, and I don't know if I still remember it right, that Town Meeting has to accept a street or a town, a town road.
Into the public, into the town?
Into our care. Because technically, when we first moved into the Whitewood area, those, those streets were not... Those, those streets were not under town care. Now, the highway department plowed them, and they would have gotten a lot of growls if they're charging me full taxes, and they don't. But technically, they don't, and it's up to the town to make sure. That the developers. Followed code, because if they scrimped on the street, 10, 15 years later, it could fall apart. So I think the idea here is, somebody has to do the due diligence to say, that street meets the code we have.
And then it flips.
And then it flips from private, even though, like I say, I know Whitewood, the town was plowing it, and it was still, quote, private road. Because they're taking taxes from us. Kind of, kind of hard to say, we're going to take your money, but we're not going to give you service.
Right.
So I think that's what that is, and normally. It'll just be referred to the sponsor because I don't know what due diligence was done on Gordon Way, but somebody must.
Yeah.
Water company budget, number 10.
This is, again, Al, this is a no-brainer, we're, we're almost there, as you know. Hopefully by December, we will own the water company. This is an article that basically allows the finance director. To continue on and, you know, fund any more expenses that are going to come, you know, with the purchase of the water company, meaning legal fees and, you know, things like that.
Well, this one is going to set up an enterprise fund.
Correct.
Just like the sewer.
Sewer department.
Which works well.
Which, you know, when you think of the mammoth increases, 1% every five years, they go up. You know, they've done a heck of a job managing it. And again, it's Milford people. You know, when, when you think of the people that are on the board, two from Highland Street, you know, these are all Milford people, they treat this the way it should be, as if it was theirs.
Right.
And when you look at the water company, Uncle Phil, Sir McColey, Jonathan Bruce, Jamie Lucchini, I mean, these are all. Even though Jonathan claims to be from Medway, he's a Milford boy, he's been here his whole life.
Yeah, yeah, and I talk about this all the time, Al, is that, you know, the importance of something like this is that. You know, you have a problem with your water on a Friday night at 5 o'clock, you're going to be in trouble until Monday morning. Now you have, you know, different layers of, of backup system, so, you know, if you don't get, you know, what you need, you call one of the water commissioners. And if they don't respond to you, you call one of the members of the select board. And trust me, I'll be at your house, or one of us will be at your house with a water commissioner, and we'll get it figured out.
Well, we'll get an answer, because I remember there was one year where my water usage doubled. And I couldn't understand, I can't find the leak, I can't, so I wrote a letter to the water company saying, how is this possible? They said, it is, our meters don't lie, pay it. And I said, but wait a minute, I happen to have plotted. Every month, every quarter. Since I moved in in 1990, you can see the trends. How is it that it doubled? Well, we don't know, but you have to pay. Uh, once it's the water department, I'd want a better answer.
Right.
You know, and I know calling Jonathan or Phil or Jamie, at least I'd get a response.
Right.
Instead of, you know.
Just pay.
You will do it my way. Okay, senior center carpet.
And this is, this is one of a few that we're going to talk tonight about, the senior center. This one is for carpeting, you know, replace some. You know, remove the, remove the carpeting, excuse me, replace some vinyl flooring, it's been on the capital plan, a $35,000 project, and again, it's, it's one of a few coming, so just to kind of highlight, we've got. Some painting interior and exterior coming, and there's an upstairs room to finish, but, but since we've got this one here, just to go back, so this is installing the vinyl flooring. And a $35,000 project, which has really been on the plan for a while, so it's just the maintenance type of work and the upgrade work that we've been talking about through the evening.
I mean, the good news is, the senior center really is fulfilling its mission of providing a lot of activities. A lot of help, because it's not just going down there to play games or do Zumba. They have the Shine Program, they have lots of programs to help our seniors. And I was reminded that I am now officially, or I'll be next month, I'll be an official senior.
Oh, you're not yet, I am.
No, no, 65 next month, I got a whole month left. But the more use, I mean, Sue Clark, I gotta remember, too many years of using her original name. Sue Clark has done a fantastic job.
Oh.
Of getting people there. And giving them incredible options. So part of that, the more people you have, the quicker you wear out the carpet.
Yeah, and I think, you know, another important thing, Al, is that if you ever have the opportunity, you know, early in the morning, go to the senior center, and there's a whole group of seniors that go in there. Just to have coffee in the grocery stores, you know, donate, you know, muffins and things like that. But it's really just about, it's probably the only place that they're going to go that day, that they're going to be able to have a conversation with somebody, you know. You know, other than sit in their home by themselves or, you know.
But that's the thing, we all think of families, that we all get together, we, you know, I've got the most dysfunctional family, we don't do anything apart. We're always together, we go away for the weekend, we all go, we do this, but there's a lot of people who don't have that extended family.
Yeah.
And it gives them this like gathering place, it's honestly no different than the pool, just in a different manner.
Absolutely.
It's bringing Milford, it's, it's, it's providing opportunities to bring Milfordians together to have that place.
Article 12, we talk about amending. The bylaws and all to absorb the water company employees.
This one seems like it's just the appropriate next step, and I know that Zach Taylor has vetted this in, in terms of just making the water company folks become part of the town department. I think Zach was, was pretty clear that the pay rates and the benefits will be similar, so that there is no differentiation there, but it seems like it's kind of the next step in this process as we move forward with the water company.
And I think you're right, because realistically, we want to keep the people who know how to run the water company.
For sure.
You know, if you think of companies you've acquired. You know, Staples goes out and buys somebody, if they fire everybody, all of a sudden, the price of pencils starts going crazy.
Can't lose that knowledge.
Because you just don't, that knowledge, that tribal knowledge that isn't written down anywhere, the contacts. We're being, I think, very fortunate that I think we're going to keep almost all or all of the employees that are just going to move over. To the town payroll versus the water company payroll.
And another great thing is, we're pretty sure that the general manager is staying, which is a great thing.
Yep. Now, article 13. This is the one I don't like. Another $175,000 of legal fees.
Yeah.
So for all of the barristers that, you know, one or two barristers that are watching, sorry, but I don't like legal fees.
Yeah.
But as you.
It's necessary.
They're big.
You don't have a choice.
Yeah.
If we don't put in the last 175 to 200,000. We walk away from everything.
Right. Yeah, and that's one of the points that, you know, the select board tried to make when we were talking to the general public, is it finally got to a point where, you know, we're all in now. We, we've, we've got to continue, because to your point, Al, if we don't, everything we spent over a 10-year period or a seven-year period is for naught.
And everything we will spend.
Yeah.
Because if you think about it, the part that bothers me the most is the paradigm that we operate under is backwards. You know, we don't pay for efficiency, we pay for inefficiency. Because the water company gets to take their expenses, add their profit margin, and that's what they charge. Well, okay, we're going to pay. 70 million dollars for a water company. If we said no, the water company would be excited, because they'll get companies that'll come in and pay 90 or 100.
Correct.
Because it's to their advantage to pay more in interest, because that interest now gets their profit margin applied to it.
Right.
So if they're paying an extra 10 grand a year in interest, interest fees, they're getting to take that 10 grand a year and add their 6 or whatever percent and recoup that as profit.
Well, also, Al, too, and, and you can remember this, you know, we went to town meeting and got a set amount of money approved. That they originally told us that they were going to sell it to us, and then all of a sudden flipped and said, oh, no, 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 it's worth this. So then we went and had it appraised and came in at one figure, they had it appraised, it was three times the figure.
150 million.
Right.
It's like, come on. But I could, I can imagine their job, and that's been the conflict, their job is to do the best they can for their stockholders.
Sure.
Right.
Not to do the best they can for Milford residents.
It's a company.
Right.
It's a company.
It's being run as a business.
And that's another great point, Al, because that's why the purchase of the Milford Water Company is an assets purchase, because they can't track all their stockholders. And what we're afraid of, or I should say, the legal teams are afraid of, is that now the town of Milford buys it, and if we bought it as a stock purchase. Three years from now, a group of people from Canada come down and say, oh. This has been in my family since 1930.
I own 1/35 of 1%.
And now we got to pay them, you know, so that's one, you know, one of the great things that the legal team has done, is it's an asset purchase.
Okay, number 14.
Number 14, it, it seems like it's a little bit of a cleanup from the planning board. In a recent town meeting, I think everybody knows that we changed the, the name of our Board of Selectmen to the Select Board, gender neutral, more inclusive. But apparently, there's still some language in other maybe bylaws, and it looks like in the zoning bylaws, that they need to strike out the reference to the, the old language of the, the selectmen and change it to Select Board. So I think it's just cleaning up something we've all agreed to.
That's all it really is. Article 15.
Again, that's a, you know, I don't know, Carly wants to speak to it, but that's basically just taking land and transferring it over to, you know, to the town, you know, for the conservation, on the conservation wetlands.
There's a number of parcels where you see four or five parcels, and these are parcels that normally people don't want to buy. It's to, to cut off the trapezoidal amount at the end of some lot that can't do anything with.
Yeah.
But we move those over to the Conservation Commission, and now it becomes part of Milford. And we make sure that nobody does anything silly on it.
Well, and again, Al, if you remember, it was a year, year and a half ago, there were what, 78 or 80 parcels that they wanted us to go after? And by the time the Conservation Committee, you know, got through with it, most of them, I think it was 29 was the final number, but the most of them all went right back to the Conservation.
Right.
You know, Commission.
Okay. Supplement the budget, number 16.
This is the one for the transportation, the bus transportation for the senior center, if I recall, and this probably falls into a theme that we've talked about earlier in terms of rising costs. So I think when we did the budget, we thought it was going to be a certain amount, and then fuel and driver maintenance came in, obviously, with everything going on at a higher amount. So this is just adding to that supplemental to be able to capture the entire cost.
Yeah, we did the budget with the information we had. But that was before the actual bids came in. So the bids came in with all the rising fuel and everything, it was $18,000 more. So this calls for up to $20,000 to be added in. But it's nothing you can do, you're going to run a bus, you're going to buy gas. I saw, I paid 350 a gallon. Today, you know, versus a year ago at 250.
And you know what, Al, it's, it's another, you spoke earlier about, you know, emotional articles, this is an emotional article. How are you going to stop that bus?
No.
You're going to tell those seniors that we're not going to come pick you up?
Wait till fuel costs go down, that's, that's not going to happen.
Yeah.
As soon as gas goes down to 299, we'll come back and get you.
No, it's, it's just, you can't do that to the town.
Okay, ADA compliance.
It's an, it's another article, honestly, Al, that it, it has to be funded. You know, we have to do it, we have to give equal access to all individuals to all of our facilities in this community. And it just has to be done.
This is one of those that I look at saying, yeah, it's the law, but even if it wasn't. I mean, the people who this affects, who need that little extra help because they're handicapped or whatever.
Yeah.
This is Milford, we take care of our own.
Yeah.
And what we've done over the years is rather than try and do a million dollars at once. We've been doing 150,000 every year. And then Rick at the town hall coordinates all the activities, so the school, the municipal buildings, they're all done as efficiently as possible.
Yeah.
But right now, it's 150,000 for this year. And for the next.
Yeah.
I don't know how many years, we'll be doing 150,000 till we deal with it. Okay. MWRTA LMNOP bus funds.
If I understand this one right, I think this is, it's a, like, really an accounting type of approval, then we see these from time to time. And, you know, what, what I, the way I read this is, you know, really, we have some funds from the Regional Transit Authority, it's about 12,500, and what we're really doing is authorizing the use of the money. And by moving it into a place where it can be spent, so it's really a transfer, if I've got this right.
It's just like the cable money. The legislature made a law that says you physically have to accept it. So Mr. Select Board member, you know that money's coming, and you know it's supposed to go to the, the bus. So it just kind of puts you on notice in the town meeting saying, yep, we understand 12 whole thousand dollars, but every little penny helps. Is being given to us by the regional bus authority, and it's to be used for the regional buses. That's all.
Yeah.
Number 19, the ability to put liens on people. Somebody want to talk about the water company liens?
I think this one really says, when we buy the water company, you've got to pay your water bill, just like all the rest of your bills. You know, so, you know, the, the language, you know, as I read it, it, it sounds like it's, you know, a lot like the other, the rights that we have, you know, if you don't pay other bills, to put a lien on your property. And it's saying, I think it's saying, hey, we can include the water company in that going forward, so pay your water bill.
That's all it's saying, I mean, for other things that you don't pay, like if you don't pay your property taxes, we can put a lien on you.
Right.
And say, hey, you got to pay, but we never had the water company included because we never had the water company. Now we do, and this will be blended into everything else.
Right.
Senior Center upstairs.
Again, Al, to me, it's, it's, it's an emotional article. You know. For years, we've kind of gone into the senior center and piecemeal different things, you know. You know, as you know, when we built it, we didn't build everything out all at the same time, so every year, we've.